And we're live.
The wrong button.
Welcome, everyone. We just have about another minute before we'll get started. Okay, it is 6:30. So welcome to the City of Mormon's Regular Medium Council on this 27th day of September. I now call this meeting to order. Any announcements? Okay, see none. Now with the agenda, I would also like to amend the agenda to add an in-camera for economic development and compensation review. So if someone could make a motion with the amendment, I would appreciate that. Counselor Peterson?
I move to approve the September 27, 2021 Regular Meeting of Council Agenda as presented with amendment.
Secondary? Counselor Tulley, any questions? All those in favor? Carrie, okay, we will move down to administration report or sorry, minutes first. Approval of the minutes, please. Motion, please. Counselor Johnson?
I move to adopt the minutes from the September 2nd, 2021 Special Meeting of Council and the September 13th, 2021 Regular Meeting of Council as presented.
Secondary? Counselor Beck, any questions? Okay, see none. All those in favor? Carrie? Okay, we'll move down to delegation. We have a delegation here. And Ryan Davidson, with the Skateboard Park? And Tish? And Tish? I'm not sure. Ryan, I'll turn it over to you. You have 10 minutes. And then if we have any questions. And some of this, it is a fairly big project and seeing that some of this will be more of an introduction for some counselors and a little bit of an update for other counselors. And then we'll give a direction after that, or we will talk about where we're going to go with this after. But it's, Ryan, you're here. Ryan Davidson? I thought I saw it. Make sure your mic's on, Ryan. We don't hear you. Okay, I'm just gonna...
He might just have joined, so he might take a second.
Okay. Everybody? Ryan, are you here?
Did you say Ryan? Are Ryan? Yes, me.
Yes, no. Perfect. There you are, Ryan. Welcome. It's Nerf Philipcheck and councils here. And we've already did a quick mention of it and we'll have your presentation up on the screen or any parts, but we're basically giving you 10 minutes right now and realize that we may need some other times to move further into this. So Ryan, I'll give the floor to you for now.
Just like that, hey? Just like that. Okay.
Just like that.
It's nice to be here, I guess, on Zoom. And thank you for taking your time to listen to me. Yeah, so you've seen, you've seen the proposal there, the kind of the brief breakdown. And some of you have heard me give a pitch on this before. And this was in relation to using the super value and leasing the space. This is different now. Because we have a property where, I don't know if you guys are familiar with the Mormon Gospel Church, that is no longer a church. Yep. It is owned, the property is owned by the EMMC Conference, who's partnered with me in this endeavor. And hang on one sec. Yeah, but just, 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 just one sec here. I just want to tell you guys kind of who I am because it's very odd for a complete stranger, I suppose, to come at you guys and ask for all this stuff. So I'm, my name's Ryan Davidson. I'm married with four kids. I'm homeowner and Mormon for the past six years. I supported individuals with disabilities for like 14 years, seven of which were in a managerial role. And I left that really lovely profession, that good profession, to pursue what I believe that I'm called to do with my life. And that's this project right here. So as you have seen in the proposal, I work for YFC. And yeah, we are pursuing this thing, this big project, this community center, this youth drop-in, and this indoor skate park. I've been spending the last two years working on this figuratively and literally. So, you know, literally, like in terms of planning and designing and research and every aspect of the development of this project. And then sort of figuratively, in terms of, you know, frontline relational development. So I've been doing lessons and trips and contests and hanging out the skate park and, you know, creating and developing this community that I want to see flourish inside this space. And really befriending and counseling and encouraging, again, just these, these young, these teenagers. And I've also been going around to different churches, trying to get them involved, and then non-Christian organizations as well. And I got to say that there's a lot of interest. There's a lot of excitement around this, the potential of this project. So yeah, like I said, since the last time I yeah, had this proposal proposed to the city council, things have changed and we have a property to use. And so essentially, the current church building will be used as what we call a mature space. There is a predominantly Filipino church using the space right now for their church services. The Mormon Gospel Church that was no longer exists. It is being turned into the Antioch Community Center. And we want to serve the community. And so there's in our program right now, using the space, the Mormon Community Band is going to be using the space. And then there's just been several other, just people from the community that have used it thus far. But we haven't advertised that, you know, there was no sign up saying this. This is just kind of word of mouth, and it's been kind of growing over the last little while here. And then, but the, but the big project is what we want to do with a back property. And which is build a 10,000 square foot building, as you can see there. And I'll show, I'll share, I'll screen share just towards the end of my little pitch here, some more pictures and then a 3D design of the space that I want to make. And yeah, and I see it just a place where people can overlap. And, and, you know, if you go to the skate park, about half of them are scootering or skateboarding, and then the other half are just hanging out. And, and so I want to create a space where that can happen, but, but happen in a safe, you know, a safe space. You know, I've just seen, I've just seen like the need of this space increase over the last couple of years. And I mean, no matter what the truth is in terms of like the external causes, teenagers are experiencing more and more stress and anxiety. And it seems like, to me at least, especially in the last few months. And I know that's not the case, but for the, for the teenagers that I have developed a relationship with, they are increasingly turning to destructive means to deal with this stress and anxiety. And so what essentially what I'm proposing is that we combat this. The City of Mormon and Antioch and EMMC and YFC, we, we combat this with this drop-in facility and this indoor skate park. This facility is going to benefit the community in a bunch of different ways. But like, I'm focusing predominantly on the teenagers of our community. I'm just seeing a desperate need to fill some gaps. And I think in providing this unique and positive and attractive, attractive option for these seniors will make a different route essentially for their life. You know, something other than intoxication and petty crime and, and like something other than an addiction to your phone and social media. I think this space is going to draw young people while meeting them where they are at. And we're going to offer activities you simply can't do elsewhere in Saskatchewan, literally. And, and then it's going to be a safe space to socialize and express themselves. We're going to have resources for those who are struggling with mental health. And the activities themselves will help with mental health. And, you know, we're going to equip the space with compassionate mentors who are, who are able to guide and encourage. And there's just something really magical about shoulder-to-shoulder activity with teenagers. It seems that's when they drop their walls that they, that they've made for themselves and really connect with, with older, you know, people like myself, mentors in their lives. And there's just something about showing and giving value to their interests. And I think that's what this, this facility will do in a greater capacity than anything else right now. And if we engage in a patient and loving dynamic where there's no pressure and there's no guilt trips and we, we are unflinching in our steadiness, which this building will be, this will be a unflinching, steady space that they can turn to. You know, I think that we'll just see incredible results and some really positive things. And I just want to use just one thing that happened this summer for me. So I developed some really good relationships with, with some young 15, 16-year-olds. And I don't know if it was COVID or isolation or what, but they all kind of, a lot of them seemed to turn into, you know, drug use and, and, you know, getting drunk and stuff like that. And they seem to, you know, stay away from me at that point. They would say like hello and all that kind of stuff, but sort of stay away from me. And I, and I, I was worried about this, obviously, but I knew that I couldn't come down hard on them as I'm not, you know, I'm not their father. I'm not their teacher or anything like that. I'm just, I'm just a friend, really. And then, and I have this philosophy that, that if we are open and receptive and, and patient, that, that they'll come around. And this really crazy thing happened where this one young guy that I'd become quite good friends with, but that had been you know, kind of not really engaging with me too much over the summer. I was at the skate park one night and he simply just came up to me and and just told me everything, everything that he had been doing that summer and sort of in this confessional mode. And I was shocked. And I was just able to sort of counsel him. And he's like, I want to do better. I'm going to do better. And and it was just this really neat moment. And I think we're going to see that over and over with our teenagers. But I really believe that, you know, we need a location for this. We need some kind of centralized spot where, where people can overlap. And we need a refuge for our teenagers. We need a safe alternative for these young adults. Some of that's not their bedroom or their basement or their, or their friend's garage. And I know you've seen my ask, and I know it's very big, but I think if we spread this kind of out and if this place exists for 15 and 20 years, that that the, the amount seems less and less. And if, you know, if you think about how much this can do for our community and how cutting edge it would be for this community. And how much it's going to draw people to the community. I just think that it's such a cool opportunity for, for the city and for us. And so yeah, I just, I thank you for this time. And I know I've been kind of rushing through this, so pardon that. But I would love to just show you guys. So you're looking at right now some, some concept art, and I would love to screen share, although I've never done that before, and just kind of run you through this 3D model of this building that I would like to, to build. Would that be okay? Is that okay? Do I have time for that?
I, that would be fine. And again, what I'm seeing is this is probably much bigger than a 10-minute presentation. And so some of this, I think, would be almost what's next. And, and some of that might be, you know, talking to our, our our recreational managers or if that hasn't already happened. So some of those things that have happened, that have made other facilities and projects moving more towards council. But by all means, share what you have. And then if there's any questions from council, it's almost like we would, we would get that information from our, from our managers as part of their package when you've done a lot of legwork. Because this is, there's days work in some ways of sharing all this passion that you have towards this. So it's a great idea, but it's now putting it down, something that the city, now that the management looks at and brings to us as council. But I'll let you continue with that.
Sure. Okay, bear with me. One sec.
Now, I'm not sure you'll be able to share, but well, I'll, I'll let our city clerk.
No, I'm not able. Okay. It says post-disabled participation, participant screen sharing, so.
This may be something you need to send out. I guess what I'll do now is maybe turn it over if there's any questions. But I'm thinking the questions are not to probably get into a lot of the details right now, but to maybe lead what our, our manager might look into when, because I think that that's our next step is maybe meeting with our recreation manager. That's my suggestion anyways, because I'm looking at some of the other projects that have happened from an idea and move through. It was a lot of times moving through that stage of, of our manager and just to see some of those, so those things come together. And the nice thing about Manager McGonigal, he's been part of the Legend Center, BMX, like the Legend Center from day one. So when we had zero money, we raised $4 million. And so he's been part of that process to move through and then it'd be coming to a, to the city. So, so I think he's a great source of information. I don't like to, you know, throw that at him right away, but he is definitely the person to go through.
He knows about it. So I met with him really, really early on about this. And so he kind of sent me through some, some, you know, doors and stuff. So yeah, yeah. So he doesn't know about it. Yeah.
Good. Okay. Counselor Johnson, you have a question?
Hi. Hi, Ryan. It's nice to meet you. Um, so again, I, I love the idea of a youth facility and kind of a safe space to have for youth. I just have a few questions. I know just going briefly through, like you had mentioned, Claystone Developments would be part of this project and would be responsible for. So I kind of, again, did some, a little bit of research. So what kind of experience do they have with like a community facility like this? Have they done this type of thing before? Are there any other costs associated? You said like a million 64 was what they're anticipating. Is that with the, I guess, the church part of the renovations that you were talking about? And is this any kind of digging and everything involved?
Yeah. So, yeah, he's, he's done, he's working on right now like a seniors home in Hague, but they've done like massive duplexes and they've got like, yeah, like they, he's built houses and a lot of facilities. He thought this was a very easy build when I brought it to him, to be honest. So yeah, so the, the church renovations, no, this, that has nothing to do with the church renovations. We are holding a fundraiser on the 7th. And, and essentially, the conference is going to look after that, which is really great. So it's, so it's going to kind of match. Because right now, the church, if you went by, it looks outdated and ancient. So we don't want that to be the case. And yeah, so the quote that I'm getting is, he's saying it's move-in ready. So that, that is the cost that it would be to, to basically move in right away and have all of that stuff. The building essentially ready to go, all the bathrooms and the walls and paint and all those little fixings, you know, it would be ready to go there. I would have to build the skate park, but I have about 30% of what I would need to do that. And I have so many people ready to donate to this as well, chomping at the bit, really. And I have like a full-fledged business plan, if you guys wanted to look at it, which is has like ongoing costs and the revenue stream that I, you know, I foresee from the building, because there will be admission and there will be rentals, et cetera, et cetera. So I would love to send that. I know Brendan has, the Economic Development Officer has my business plan, but it's a lot to go through. So, yeah.
Yeah. And then, so thank you.
Copy of that, just so you know, we did get a copy of that later on. So not everyone's probably had a chance to go through that.
Yeah. So then just as a continuation of that, like you did talk about the revenue stream generated. And I'm not really sure about what the operating costs, again, I have to go through. But if that revenue is going to kind of cover your operating costs, or if you're looking for yearly amounts, but I was, you were talking about the mental health and addictions. So are you going to be employing social workers and having addictions counselors on, on staff? Or what is the plan for that?
Not to that extreme, but have relationships with them and have like, essentially, I see this as kind of a bridge, because I think going to social workers or going to addictions counselors can be quite intimidating. And so I see this as almost a bridge in that respect. So having resources, when I say resources, I mean having people with numbers and having cards and having relationships with people that could potentially come in, but not that we would hire, you know, a social worker. So, yeah.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Counselor Peterson?
So what, this seems like a project that's very much akin to like a Mormon version of EGADs in a lot of ways. A little bit different, but very similar. Have you, have you had an opportunity to chat with them or any other kind of youth drop-in centers to see how they operate and what you can take out of that and what you wouldn't fit here?
Yeah, totally. I worked at EGADs. So I worked at EGADs for a year and I loved it. It was great. And so, yeah, I mean, like YFC itself runs a youth drop-in in Saskatoon. And so it's like for inner-city kids mostly. And so I've learned a lot from that. I, you know, I, it's going to have typical things like video games and pool tables and ping pong and stuff like that. And I just think that what's going to make it super unique is having that skate park right there. That's how I see it. If I'll send, I'll send a link to Brendan or to whomever it needs to go to. And you can kind of explore the building. And you'll see how it's going to work and how it's going to be overlapping and, and how many different little options and things can come through a place like this. So, yeah. Done lots of research, though.
Thank you. Counselor Ramich?
Thanks very much. And thanks very much for the presentation, Ryan. Just really one question here, as other counselors have covered some of the other ones. When we talk about the skate park area, that is an expansion to the existing building, if I read the package correctly?
A secondary building, not an expansion, but a secondary building.
Okay. And then that, that building would front onto Peter Street. That would be a residential area, correct?
Not, I have it kind of situated differently. So it would be like you would drive through the parking lot and then the front of the, the secondary facility would be kind of facing the back of the church. So not, not.
Have you had a, have you had a chance to talk to our manager of planning, just to check about zoning, just to make sure that, 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 that can fit within, within the zoning in the area?
I, I know, I know it's not zoned properly right now. It's zoned R2 or something like that. I can't remember exactly what it was, but I've also been told that it wouldn't be too hard to rezone it when it came, like, you know, when it came to that time, if it comes to that time. So, yeah.
Okay, so, so you were given the impression that a rezoning would be fairly simple?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
As far as I'm, I didn't talk. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, that's good. I'm glad that was part of, part of the research. And it's a very interesting proposal. Thanks for bringing it forward.
Other questions or comments? Counselor Tulley?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you for making it again this evening. And I know I've sort of seen your vision a little bit in the past, where you were looking at the super value as being a potential location. And it actually kind of looks like you took sort of some of the advice that, or some of the, some of the questions, some of the comments that came from some of the previous presentations. And you're kind of moving a little bit further down the path. So it's encouraging to see that and, and just keep up the good work. And, and hopefully we'll see, maybe, I'm not sure what the stake or what the, what the piece of City of Mormons is going to look like involved with this, but I do hope to see this as a facility in our community at some point. So keep up your work.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Counselor Beck?
Thank you very much. And Ryan, thank you very much for the background material and certainly like the presentation. So, you know, certainly this year, like going forward, you know, like, you know, let's say, you know, some of the other information here that I'd like to see is, is, you know, let's say some of the background on, on the EMMC, exactly who they are, how, and how they, how that they would fit into the entire, you know, you know, let's say, you know, structure of any agreement, you know, let's say, kind of coming forward. And also, you know, certainly knowing a little bit more about, you know, the YFC and also you know, like yourself and, and Antoc. So, you know, certainly from that aspect. Yeah, you know, it would just be nice to see that puzzle, you know, it's like kind of layered together, you know, you know, let's say, you know, you know, at the next time that this comes forward. Similar to Counselor Ramich's, you know, questions and that and whatever. Obviously, with this year, like there would be, let's say, some planning things and some questions that I would have around there. But there again, that's beyond the scope of today's discussion. So again, I'd like to thank you for your professionalism and also the, you know, the content that you provided here today. So thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Okay, so as I said, I think the next, and I'll talk to Manager Smith to make sure that that's the best way. But to me, it's a sit down and go through a lot of the different stuff to say, because in some ways, I'm looking at some of the projects that moved through, like the BMX, you know, Diamond BMX. A lot of them, a lot of that, the money was almost upfront beforehand. And then, then there were some partnerships aspects that came to it. But that's where I think Manager McGonigal, I don't want to, I don't want to speak for Manager Smith on this, but I think it's one where it's sitting down and going through all aspects of it, to almost, to say, what is a fair way? And then almost the manager recommendation on where we should go, because it ultimately has to be budgeted for the money that we're going to look at for something like this. And, and so it's just, we don't, we don't have the authority to make that call, just that, let's do it this way. So I, from a personal perspective, I also think that you having that, those donations set with a bank account where those are already in place, it's no different than, than a mortgage in some ways, the other way around. So having some of that already in an account would go a long way. And I'm saying that, that I, just as some people are eager to donate, I would start that process, because that, that can only help you. Because I know with doing some of those things that we've done in the past, that's where the ask is probably moved along quicker. Manager Smith?
Good to know.
Yeah, I was just curious on what your timeframes were, what you were thinking from, you know, kind of a start to finish, when the project would start, when it would be completed. And have you given any thought to that?
Yeah, most definitely. So I mean, like the current church building that's happening is like, we're going to renovate that shortly. But then in terms of the secondary, you know, facility, it really depends on how, like the fundraising aspect of it, which I'm going to be pursuing pretty heavily here. Especially as the church, the current church building kind of gets figured out, then I'm going to have a lot more free time to really chase that down. But, you know, the earliest that Claystone could do it is in spring. And he said it would take about four months to complete. And then I would see it. And then we build the skate park and all that kind of stuff. And I would like, in, I think in the, the proposal, I say that, you know, at the very latest, we'd start kind of January 2023. But if everything clicked along, and if we could, you start to build in the spring and it took four months, then it's potentially, you know, we could open this next November, but I'm not, I'm not, yeah, it really depends on the money. And but this is my full-time job. This is what I'm doing for a living. And so, yeah, I'm pursuing it aggressively. So, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing that aspect of it too. And I, again, I would happy to be, reach out with you too and, and converse, because I also as part of that Legends one and just some of the, some of the strategies used there to get the donations too. So
Beautiful.
If there's nothing else, thank you very much, Ryan. And, and we'll reach out. So I'll talk to Manager Smith and we'll reach out, but we'll have either communication with him or with one of his managers to, to continue the conversations for sure.
Awesome.
Move it to actions. Okay, thank you.
All right. Have a good evening.
You too. Okay, with that, we'll move down to our same managers' report. Manager Smith?
Thank you, worship. I have one item in this evening. It is the 2021 to 2025 Strategic Plan. On April 8th of this year, City Council set aside a full day to develop strategic plan for the city for the next five years. The results of the full-day discussion were, actually came out four pillars, which were service, infrastructure, growth and innovation, and also governance. And council passed a resolution adopting the five-year strategic plan on June 21st. I've attached a spreadsheet with the initiatives that were presented in the report. And kind of provided a breakdown of who would be responsible for it and maybe some expected time, times to complete or start. And the purpose of the report is to receive council's feedback on the completion dates that were put on there to determine if they wish to alter any of those dates that were provided. The strategic plan, like all other plans, is a living document and should be reviewed at least once a year. And so the recommendation that I have is that the updated 2021, 2025 Strategic Plan for the City of Warren be accepted as presented, unless there's changes that council wishes to see.
Thank you for that. And just, just so we know, as you mentioned, we, we met in April as a group, then we agreed upon, we passed the strategic plan. And now this is the worksheet of giving dates to that. And I guess it's, we're making a motion now to move forward. And it sort of ties that this is our five-year plan. So we're, we're putting a lot of our big ideas that, when we met in April, that we're now putting this down on paper of giving management a direction as well as for budget, budgetary reasons. So if somebody would like to make a motion? Counselor Beck?
Thank you very much, Mayor. So I'd like to make the motion that the updated 2021 to 2025 Strategic Plan for the City of Warren be accepted as presented.
Secondary? Counselor Johnson? Questions, comments? Okay, see none. All those in favor? Carrie?
Thank you, worship.
Thank you. We'll move down. We'll move down to uh Finance, Major Rosenthal Hebert.
Good evening, Mayor Philip Chuck, um, City Council. I have one item for council's consideration tonight, that being the National Day of Truth and Reconciliation. The Government of Canada recently passed legislation recognizing September thirtieth as a federal statutory holiday, calling it the National Day. For truth and reconciliation. The City of Werman pay HR seven oh one, are considered within the policy as paid holidays uh with regular daily rates for the normal workday. And also states that any other day proclaimed as a holiday by federal provincial or civil.
You're cutting in and out there a bit, Amanda. Now you froze, I think. Now, we did go over this at Committee of the Hall, so I'll maybe open it up for a motion. If somebody would like to make a motion, Counselor Seed.
Would the council recognize September thirtieth the National Day of Truth and Reconciliation as a statutory holiday? For all City of Werman employees to honor survivors, families and communities and to recognize the history and legacy of residential schools.
Seconder. Counselor Beck. Any questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor? Carrie. Unanimously. So when I say Carrie before I go opposed, it's unanimous. Okay, we'll move down then. Thank you.
Thank you.
To Fire Chief Austin.
Good evening, Your Worship, members of council. Um, I was going to try to do this from a fire scene. We still have a fire going on, but uh I managed to get away. For one quick and painless item here uh for you this evening. As presented at the last Committee of the Hall, our fire, uh, Wormfire Rescue Standard Operating Guidelines have been updated for council approval. Uh, council approvals needed every two years with the next approval being scheduled for fall of twenty twenty-three, and I have a recommendation.
Uh, motion please. Counselor Peterson.
Make the motion to approve the Werman Fire Rescue Standard Operating Guidelines as presented to council, the Committee of the Hall meeting on Monday, September twentieth, twenty twenty-one.
Seconder. Counselor Johnson. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carrie.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move down to Economic Development. Manager Gazmo. Or Economic De- Development Officer Gazmo.
Evening, uh, Mayor and Council. Uh, it's a pleasure to be here. Um, so I just have one, one item for um consideration tonight. Um, just the one oh. And uh Clausen Street West lease agreement, so um was tasked with um just following up with uh Prairie Sky Chamber as well as Route eleven. Um, and since the uh Monday, September twentieth, um Committee of the Hall, um. Just some of the feedbacks, obvious, you know, we are in a, we are in a pandemic, um, uh, high revenue um businesses, but they're very important. Um, you know, as you've all mentioned, to just in the fabric of our community and, and keeping those um within our community, so. Um, obviously with revenue being uh, you know, tighter and just the lack of maybe events. Being able to help, be held during this uh fourth wave of the pandemic, um. Administration just had recommends that um option A be considered by City Council. And we reexamine moving forward with both agreements renewed at the same time. And option A is currently extending the uh Prairie Sky Chamber lease until March thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. And it would just be the Prairie Sky Chamber at this time, because Route eleven is, is extended already, or their original lease agreement goes till March thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Um, and then no crease in lease payments at this time. Um, it's different than the option B at Committee of the Hall, but it was felt that. Um, just some of the comments that we had received, um, as well as I think Mayor Philip Chuck, um, we just felt that. Um, this was administration's recommendation, so I'll open it to any questions or concerns.
A motion please. Counselor Ramech.
Uh, I moved that the Prairie Sky Chamber of Commerce lease be extended until March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two.
Seconder. Counselor Beck. Questions? Counselor Beck.
Uh, thank you. Um, yeah, and you know, you know, certainly for uh, you know, let's say both lease agreements there, you know, let's say coming due at the same time. Certainly gives us the ability to, you know, to certainly negotiate with, with our, with our leaseholders at that particular time. That way there, at least if there was like an ending to it, that, you know, you know, that uh, you know, you know, that uh both leases wouldn't, let's say, wouldn't be staggered. So we would certainly have that information going in and certainly going forward on that. Um, I still stand by, you know, you know, let's say, in, you know, let's say, uh, you know, by the discussion that we've had previously. That really the increase that we're talking about isn't really exorbitant. And in fact, when I look at the five percent increase, I'm going like, you know, by the time. You know, you look at uh, you know, let's say uh changes with carbon tax, natural inflation, you know, building maintenance and things like that, and we see all of those costs rising. That maybe five percent actually might not even be enough. What we are looking for is recapture on that building. So that way there, where, you know, like we get the same building back, even though that it's at a later timeframe. And that we still, like you said, support that fabric, you know, of, of uh, of uh, you, you know, you know, community spirit here. So. Um, you know, I'm like, I do think, you know, the City of Werman is a very workable partner. I don't think that our ask is terribly large. But, but having both of those uh lease agreements come due at the same time certainly makes a lot of sense and uh. And, and certainly uh streamlines a lot of the work that you do under your office. So uh, thank you very much for the recommendation.
Thank you.
Uh, Counselor Ramech.
Uh, thanks very much, and uh, I'd echo what Counselor Beck was saying in terms of making sure that. Uh, we're recapturing our costs on these buildings, uh, but I do agree with using option A as that, that, that signals. To both of these organizations that uh, that their lease will be negotiated and updated uh as of March thirty-first, uh, two thousand twenty-two. And allow some planning for, for them as well as us. So um, I think um it's really important to make sure that we are. Recovering all our costs so that we can maintain this building, but I think this just shows a good partnership with these organizations that provide a lot to the city as well.
Do, any other questions or comments? I, I just have one point to put in here, and I guess I look at both of these services as being ones that. If they were not in our city, we would do a lot to attract them and, and, and we would do, we would try and reach out to have an art center, to have. Uh, the cultural center too, like there's, there's different aspects to come to it. So I think keep that in mind, and again, they are small increases, but. For small budgets, and I, I guess I appreciate that this is the direction, because I think that it allows for a proper consultation. Not a short period, so it gives a full few months of consultation to hear, hear the story, because I think that that's uh during COVID, doing any changes that have. Five percent increases, even though, you know, we see them as small increases, I, 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 you know, talking to some of them. They're just, the cash flow is not coming. So it's, so it's, it's, so it's, we want to hear their story, and I think that uh, that, that's a good direction, so. But it's also, I sure, I, I sure know what it's like trying to attract places like this after the fact too. So that's, that's. The point I want to mention. So uh, no other questions or comments? Okay, we'll call the question then. All those in favor? Carrie. Unanimously, yep.
Thank you.
A motion to um. Okay, so a motion to file admin reports. Counselor Ramech.
Take a second to find the unmute button. I thought we were done with this. Uh, I move to file the administration reports for Monday, September twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-one as presented.
Seconder. Counselor Seed. Any questions? All those in favor? Carrie. Okay, we'll move down to council committee reports. So with my report. Um, fairly quiet, but this week is seeming to be really busy, and some of it is just the. Uh, the changes of uh what's happening here October first, with the vaccine passports, it just seems like everybody's. Trying to get their information quickly. So I had a, had a, a Wheatland Executive Meeting on Saturday and some of the same anxiety with them too. So. Um, any questions from my report? Okay, I'll ask for a motion then to file my report. Counselor Peterson.
I move to file the mayor's report for Monday, September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one as presented.
Seconder. Counselor Johnson. All those in favor? Carrie. Okay, we'll do our roundtable, and we'll start with uh Counselor Seed.
Good evening, Mayor Philip Chuck. Um, I was uh fairly busy week, um, quite a few different things going on. I did have an opportunity to attend the uh Legends Golf Course uh monthly meeting. Um, I will share those uh with council, uh, because there's some financial statements there that I think everybody would be. Surprised to see. Uh, again, all is extremely positive. Um, I've quite frankly never seen a budget that was more incorrect. Uh, because they've exceeded their expectations uh in some cases by four or five times. Um, it, it's, it's remarkable. Uh, there's been some really, really hard but fair discussions in. Uh, what is the best opportunity for the course, i.e. do they look at paying off some debt? Or do they look at making some capital expenditures? And I'm quite happy to say that they've referred it back to their accountant. Uh, to review for the biggest bang for your buck, uh, no pun intended. So uh, I'm feeling really, really confident with what they have going on. Um, again, I check in with Chief Austin at least once a week. Uh, he filed his report quite well. There were some concerns there with uh Engine eleven. And protect, protect, uh, sorry, particularly the engine on it, uh, looks like that's all there is all. So I'm, I'm very, very confident that uh. That truck is, is a hundred percent back in service, and Chief Austin and his team did a remarkable job of making sure that we were covered. Uh, even using some older equipment that we had, uh, and we're still, still able to even render service to our allied communities, which is a. A testament to their preparedness. So uh, besides that, uh, again, still working on some of the uh ambulatory. Uh, things, and hopefully we can get some uh, some answers here shortly. And uh, short of that, uh, I don't have anything else to further.
Thank you. Counselor Johnson.
Oh my goodness, I couldn't find the button. Uh, so I had a conference planning uh meeting this morning, so we're in a good spot. Got some more sponsors uh that came in. Um, so it's fantastic to see people are donating. I have a uh. Tour tomorrow. Um, at uh Miss Kaukwin uh Indian Residential School. Uh, so that will be a uh, a heavy day uh early in the morning. Uh, but something that's completely necessary, and I'm looking forward to it. Uh, other than that, uh, not much else to report from the environmental side or the reconciliation side.
And that conference is for the Prairie River Rivers Regional Reconciliation.
Yes, in November, yep.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Beck.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Philip Chuck. So uh, three items uh just to uh bring forward here today. Uh, first is I have all of the background information uh put together for the uh, for the city manager review, so uh, with this year, I'll certainly reach out to uh. To Mayor Philip Chuck here uh during the week, and then uh, you know, you know, uh, certainly outline exactly how that that's gonna go. Share that with all of council, and with this year, uh, you know, you know, uh, you know, certainly take comments there, but it is a format that I have followed. Uh, you know, uh, two times previous, and we have had a lot of success with it. So, you know, uh, certainly benchmarks along the way that, you know, that we can use for comparable. So there's. You know, certainly a lot to say there about the process. So I guess that would be the first one. Um, second uh thing is uh we had a uh Summers direct, uh, permit, a SUMA directors' meeting uh just on Friday. And um, and uh with that there, uh, we do have the SUMA advocacy and activity report. So it's a fairly detailed, comprehensive um uh report, you know, you know, uh, certainly outlining a lot of uh, you know. You know, the advocacy and things that uh, you know, that SIM has been involved in, uh, certainly here on the year. So. It's pretty comprehensive list, but I will uh send that out to council. Uh, so you can certainly review that. If you have any questions on that, I can certainly take those that, you know, as they certainly do come up and go from there. Um. Final thing is today I did send out um a uh sign up and registration for the SUMA COVID nineteen webinar. That actually takes place tomorrow. For anybody that can't make it, as long as you sign up and whatnot, uh, with this year, like you would get a, a, um, a recorded copy of it. You know, you know, let's say like a link to that's sent out to you. So um, with this year, we do have Minister McMorris, uh, you know, uh. Participating in that webinar tomorrow. So he uh, he uh did confirm that today, so. It certainly be good to have him, you know, right there to certainly give uh some guidance for municipalities, uh, you know, going forward with the, with COVID nineteen uh. Uh, situation. So uh, those are the three items, and uh, and that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move to uh Counselor Tulley.
Don't necessarily have a whole lot to report, uh, just since our last get-together. Um, we did have a library board meeting last Wednesday. And not anything significant coming out of that meeting to report. And outside of that, just Recreation Department seems to be kind of clipping along. There was a, a busy weekend at the Legends Center with uh Blades Raiders preseason exhibition game. And unfortunately, my hometown team did not win that game, from what I understand. And outside of that, I uh don't have anything else.
Uh, Counselor, Counselor Peterson.
Although the last week, there hasn't really been a lot happening, so not much to report this time.
Uh, Counselor Ramech.
Uh, a pretty short report as well on my end, uh, although do have a P four G meeting on October first, so looking forward to going that. Uh, that one uh will be, or the option is available to uh be in uh the RM council chamber, so that'd be good to be able to see everybody face to face.
Okay, thank you. And that was a, yeah, they have face-to-face and a Zoom option for that one, so there'll be a combination. Uh, so we will move down to. Uh, other reports, turbidity reports? Motion please. Counselor Tulley.
I move to file the turbidity report for August twenty twenty-one as presented.
Seconder. Counselor Seed. Any questions from that? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carrie. Okay, we will move down to accounts. Motion please. Counselor Beck.
Uh, so I'd like to uh make the motion to approve the city accounts as presented by checks numbered two six zero six six. To two six one three five for the total amount of one million, one hundred and sixty-two thousand, one hundred twenty-two dollars and ninety-nine cents. And for the payroll vouchers numbered one twenty-nine seventy-seven to one thirty fifty-one in the amount of one hundred eight thousand. Three hundred and ninety dollars and sixty-six cents for Monday, September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one.
Seconder. Uh, Counselor Peterson, any questions from that? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carrie. Okay, so uh, motion going counter, but before that, just want to mention, I should have mentioned this at the beginning. I know. Uh, made the call to go to Zoom meetings right now, and again, we've had that increase of numbers, but it almost seems like we're getting government updates. Daily on some of the changes. So some of that is the challenges for administration to put this together. We have them looking, they will be looking at o- options to go in person. We will, we do have the Brian King Center for our Committee of the Hall, so. Are ones where there's more robust conversations, our Committee of the Hall will stay in person, and we, we can have spacing. Again, it's in the spirit of it. It's not legally that we have to be spaced, but I, I think that uh with the numbers going up daily, it's, we're trying to do the best we can that way. So. So that, I want to share that with everybody before we go in camera and turn off the, the video right now. So uh with that, if I could get a motion, go in camera, and this is discuss economic development and the uh, and the uh. The uh compensation. Uh, Counselor Peterson.
I'd like to make the motion that we go in camera to discuss the economic development and uh compensation package.
Seconder. Uh, Counselor Ramech. Any questions? Okay, all those in favor?